I call this meeting of 5,6,000 to order. Today is Tuesday, July 8, 2025, and it's 7:06. Would the clerk call the rules, please?
Councilman Fai.
Present.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Sedman.
Present.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Present.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan. Mayor, would you... I'm sorry, do the forum.
Thank you. Please rise for the committee. Item A, item B, item C, item D, and item E. And to the public, which stands for one hundred. And if there's a problem, we'll never get there. Thank you. All right. Do we have any community announcements today?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Let me just pull it up on the screen, just so anybody who's not here is able to see this. We do have... We have an election August 5th, and again, until the election hits, I will remind you that your precincts may have changed. So, the map is on the screen. It shows that we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 precincts. You will continue to vote in the same location you've always voted in, but your precinct number may have changed. So, we will have door people, when people enter the building, to be, you know, they'll have their computers out there to guide people to what direction they have to go. But again, please pay attention to the voter ID card that we sent you to your house. It tells you exactly what precinct you have to go to. Make our lives easier, and please let me also point out, and I would please beg of the council members to let community know that all the ballots that we sent to their homes, if they decide to still vote at the precinct, you can take that ballot with you to the precinct, okay? We can tabulate that ballot. Please bring your ballots with you if you decide to vote on the day of election. It's very difficult, and it's a high... The long lines of people who spoil their ballots because they keep their ballots at home and come and want to request another one. So, we have to go through the process of calling the clerk's office, spoiling that ballot, and then allowing them to get another ballot at the precinct. So, they can always take their ballot to the precinct themselves and tabulate it there, okay? And then, obviously, if anybody has any questions on election, please feel free, you're more than comfortable, and welcome to call the clerk's office with any questions. And please, candidates, we do have a large amount of candidates on the ballot. Please be aware that you are limited to coming to the clerk's window. Do not approach the window with voters. Do not approach voters in the building. You can continue coming in for day-to-day work, but try to limit your election business at my window because we do have ballots on it in our office, and that's sort of against the rules, okay? Other than that, that's it for community announcements.
Do you need a larger window?
What is that? Larger window? We got two of them.
All right. Any more announcements?
No, sir.
All right. So, proclamations, recognitions, presentations, do we have any?
No announcements.
All right. Additions and deletions to the agenda? Any additions or deletions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
I'd like to pull from consent as in, we'd like a draft resolution number 202585 to the new business.
Second.
I'm sorry, which one do you want?
You mean 85? You said 58.
85.
85, Labor Day?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to break this down. And Councilman Khalil, you seconded?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
All aye.
All right, so that would be...
C.
C, and then you...
And then if we could add a brief close session.
Yeah.
Okay, I need a motion to add a close session.
I motion.
Khalil and Musa.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to the agenda for a strip closure, a bungalow festival, 8, 9, and 10.
Second.
Can you move to Carpenter?
Joseph Campo from Connect to Carpenter?
Carpenter, yes.
Okay. Carpenter.
I'm calling, please.
From...
Joseph Campo.
Connect to Carpenter.
Just for August.
August 8, 9, and 10, yes. No objections, Mr. Mayor.
Or, I'm sorry, the name of the festival?
I think it's, what is on applications, the bungalow fest?
Desi Festive Nights?
Desi is a D-E-S-I?
Desi.
Desi? Desi, I'm sorry?
D-E-S-I. Desi Festive?
D-E-S-I, Desi. But Desi what? What's the next word?
Festive. Festive Nights.
Festive Nights.
Yeah. I got more information now.
I'm so sorry, but I think we have to back up one step. Do you want to do it for me? Go ahead.
Sure, you go ahead.
Thank you. We have to vote on the addition of the closed session.
Okay.
So, please, Mayor, if you're all in favor of the closed session...
Yes. Is everybody on favor of that?
Aye.
And now, now we have Councilman Mahmoud and Councilman Fai to close Joseph Campo from Connect to Carpenter. What are the dates again? I apologize, I guess she...
August 8, 9, and 10.
Is 8 to 8, and none, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is that all for additions? Do we have a motion to agenda approval of the amended agenda?
Your motion, all second.
Thank you, all in favor.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, we have the amended agenda approved. May Fai have any more additions or deletions?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move to the public comments, please.
All right, I'm going to read a few emails. This is from Mike Petrac. Hi, Ron, I would like to submit the following for public comment. On behalf of the Joseph Campo Business Community, I am writing to encourage council to approve all necessary permits for the Hamtramck Labor Day Festival. The festival brings substantial economic benefits to our community by bringing a large influx of peaceful people from surrounding areas. The organizers consistently produce an event which offers something for every part of our community and truly enriches life for Hamtramck residents. From the delighted laughter of children on the carnival rides to the cheers of the fans attending the musical performances, this festival provides a chance for Hamtramckans to come together and spend a joyful weekend celebrating the things that make this city special. Now more than ever, our city needs this. Thank you, Mike Petrac. This is from Michael Capato. First off, I want to say that I'm a supporter of the festival and glad that we have it, but I do have one issue in regards to the street closure and something that I have addressed to Max online, the lack of adequate signage, direct cars the correct way on the one-way streets in town. I live on Comer between Campo and McMay, so my street is heading one way towards Joseph Campo. Prior to the opening of Puff, the barrier was placed parallel to the alley with a sign directing traffic to turn left on the alley to move towards Carpenter or to go straight if driving through the alley from Zeno and to turn left and head away from Campo. Since Puff had to open, the street is blocked at Campo, allowing people to park by Puff, and there are no longer any signs directing people coming through the alley not to turn left onto my street. So, cars constantly go the wrong way, often speeding down Comer. We have a lot of small children on my block. The summer is... The summer, this summer, it appears that various children and grandchildren, around 30 kids, just in the houses surrounding me, they play outside, riding bikes, a scooter, playing ball, and other activities. I have feared for a number of years that something would happen with these cars racing the wrong way down the street. There have been... There has been close calls over the years, and I fear so many kids out of this summer. God forbid something should happen. I'm not taking... I'm not talking about a few cars. On the Friday afternoon alone last year before the festival even started, I counted 50 cars going the wrong way just in a few hours. I sat on the porch after work. It's worse on festival days, all day and all hours of the night and day and night. The children, the older children in the neighborhood even count the cars. It's not safe, and although many streets have signage and arrows, Comer has been consistently been ignored, almost as if the city has certain amount of signs and runs out before they hit mine. I beg the city to please do something about the wrong way traffic turning from the alley behind Puff by keeping that little block open for Puff's customers to park and not closing the street with a barrier parallel to the alley with proper signage pointing the correct way to go so that no children on my block get injured. I've reached out to Max several times about this to be met with just a shrug and being told there's no more signs. So, I asked the city council and city officials to please work harder to protect the children as well as our properly parked cars from people speeding the wrong way down the street. Is this a DPW issue or police?
Of that, the police, and I'll deal with Conrad.
Okay, just so that we know that it gets taken care of. Hello, City Clerk. This is from Charles Blackwell. It's funny that Mayor Gallup calls himself an alpha male, but he states he's scared and uncomfortable with Max Garberino attending city council meetings. That's all for email comments. I have Ibrahim Al-Jahim, 3 minutes.
Yeah, just before I start, Muheeth's name is with Khalil, and Khalil's name is with Muheeth. I don't know who's responsible for that, the city. All right. So, the first thing I want to talk about, the meters. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for getting rid of that. But we should do a mandate for every business to pay 250 a month, like Dearborn, like every other city. At least help with the cost that the city lost, which was around 30,000. Every business should give 250 a month for the city and put on downtown, which is Joseph Campo, a 2-hours limit a day, parking, for the, you know, for that one to park all night and all day and just leave it there. Point number 2, there's a former council member that attacks Muslims and this, this, and that. And there's a current member that's running on his sign. I was driving around, it says, "Fight corruption." I did not hear about that. I did not see that in any signs till Max said there is corruption for a decade, a decade in the city, since the Muslims took over. And you guys know what he's talking about. And I don't have to say what he said here again. What do you expect? They're Muslims. What they're going to do in a meeting? They're Muslims. A decade of corruption because they're Muslims. Wake up! As elected officials, wake up! Max should not come back to the city. The third one, 4th, the assistant city manager position. We don't need it. It's a waste of money. Just leave a city manager. You don't need an assistant. He needs a secretary. The fifth thing I want to talk about is I want to say thank you all, Anubhav Mayor, our future ambassador, and Dr. Amir Ghali, for your leadership and service for this community. Thank you.
Muthahar Fadl.
Salaam alaikum. Good evening. And we have one topic to talk about. I talked about it last meeting, or the one before, about the walk-in light on Kenev Liberty Academy. I spoke here, and I talked to so many of you, and I did not hear a response. I don't know who we should contact, or you guys rejected or something. It's about our students' or children's safety on that school, and it's also about the parents' safety as well. That's all for today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's all for public comment, Mr. Mayor.
That's all?
That's all. Don't jinx it.
Please, bro.
All right. Thank you. So, we move to the consent agenda. This is approved with a single motion with no discussion. We have approval of minutes from the June 24, 2025, for the city council meeting. B, approval from voice register date ending July 8, 2025. C, approval of pre-approval expenditure date ending July 8, 2025. And finally, resolution 2025-86 approving acceptance of the FY 2024 Community Project Funding Grant Agreement. Number B-24, CP-01178.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No objections?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have a public hearing. Resolution 2025-8B approving second reading and public hearing for rezoning of Parsers and Carpenters feed from R to C.
Motion, second.
All right. That's to...
And then to start the public comment at 7:20. We do not have any public comments for it, so we can motion to close.
Motion, second. 7:20.
All right. Is there any further discussion from the council members?
No, sir.
We can go ahead and vote.
Well, actually, I apologize. We also have to open up the... We motioned to start the public hearing, but we didn't motion to vote on the resolution, so...
Motion to vote? To close, a second.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to vote on this?
Ah, yes. And it's yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2025-8B approved.
Thank you. All right. We move to the new business, and we have item A, resolution 2025-87 approving acceptance of code from load Umir incorporation for portable wheel load scales.
Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is a weigh scale that is portable that you get for police cars so that we can monitor the trucks that come through our city and make sure that they're near to the weight limits on the roads because this creates a lot of, you know, breakage and a lot of maintenance issue. And this is a portable scale which can be taken from any place to any other place. It can be kept in the trunk of the police car. We can monitor it. And all of this amount is going to come out of the road.
Yeah, this is a... This is really instrumental. The amount of our revenue, these big trucks causing the damage to our major roads, this scale could probably generate up to $100,000 of revenue per city per month. These tickets are not small tickets. These are tickets that are $2,000, $3,000. They'll try to put it in a permanent spot. Doesn't work, have to maintain it. DPW's got to claim it. There's no drain for it.
We're already seeing results, though, I will say. We started doing trucking tickets under their chief al-taqiri, and honestly, right now, we're getting a lot of them. They're doing a good job with them. And the difference between trucking tickets and normal tickets is we can charge a lot more on the trucking tickets because they're doing it as part of their job. If they're being unsafe as part of their job or they have unsafe things, they're getting ticketed for numerous things. So, instead of like a normal ticket where we get maybe $150 and we have to split that with the state, these, we're getting like $600. We still have to split it with the state, but we're getting a lot, a lot more, bigger return. So, these tickets are actually going to maybe help us to replace some of the revenue from the parking, the loss of parking.
I think more importantly, more than the fines for this, it saves a lot of maintenance costs on the road in the long run. And that costs into millions. So, I think that is a bigger saving. I look at it from that perspective. That's going to cost a lot less to maintain these roads, and they're going to last a lot longer when they adhere to the weight limits that the roads are designed for.
And the officers had an opportunity to look at the unit that we want to purchase, and had to see, also recommended it. So, this is something that's been researched, actually, for quite a while.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, my lord.
Yeah. That's the good thing I'm here, so no issue.
What's the cost line for the ticket?
21,400.
We would make that back in a couple of weeks. Honestly, the tickets with these weight... I've represented people for trucking tickets in various other cities, usually Western Michigan, but they charge 3,000, 4,000 a ticket. And then, as an attorney, I negotiated, and then they'll say, oh, the best I'll do, 3,400. They'll drop down like 800 or 1,000 dollars, but they're still making so much money. They... A couple of tickets will make that money, truly.
Mr. Chair, I can agree on that.
Counsel would know, yeah.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for a while, so it's good to start implementing that and, you know, finding different ways to collect some money and some revenue instead of parking meters, you know, that hurt the businesses and scare the visitors, you know, when they come to Hamtramck, so, yeah.
There you go.
Yes, please.
Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-87 approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item is parking meter discussion.
I need a motion?
Motion, second.
Yeah, so we just want to discuss some ideas, you know, alternative ways to enforce parking on downtown Joseph Campo. We want to hear from the residents, and we want to hear from, you know, council members and anybody who has, who has some ideas about, you know, that will work for the business owners and for the residents without causing any harm to either side and something that will regulate parking on Joseph Campo. So, we are not taking any decision today. We just want to hear from people. And then, we will finalize our decision on what's best for the city, for the business owners, and for the residents. So...
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Hassan.
So, the, like Ibrahim Al-Jahim also said, there is lots of owner, honestly, try to donate also, or we'll talk to the owners. We, I think we have already subcommittee. They can have the meeting with the owners and then see what they want, first priority. Second, also, they all agree. Third, we will discuss ourselves. So, how, 1 hour, maybe owner going to say 2 hours. We're not going to agree with everything what they say. So, we'll take the decision. I think subcommittee can call owner town hall meeting first, heard from the owner's side. Then, we'll talk other thing and how we're going to do it. And if not, there is the 2017, before I get out from council to run mayor, there was the upgraded manual meter was there also. We'll talk to John about that one. And also, and all couple of scenario or idea will come. First, I'm requesting to subcommittee to first only the business owner and sit with them and see what comes out from there because that deal more with the customer than us and than the people. So, that is the thing, idea. Also, you told me there the... There is the manual ticket system. There is the something we have to buy system. I think system already there because parking enforcement officer already putting the ticket. That ticket is going through the court system. The system already there. So, again, long story short, I think subcommittee called the meeting with the business owners first. Then, we'll go from second, third, fourth opinion. It's nothing going to be free. We will reimburse the money this way or that way. It will be there. Thank you.
Thank you. So, some of the concerns for some business owners are the time limit. So, if we come up with some signs to say 1 hour parking, 3 parking, or 2 hours, there are several businesses who are very concerned about the time limits because their customers stay for longer than that. For example, the museum and such several other businesses, visitors stay for 3, 4 hours. So, they are very concerned about this. And when we mentioned last time, getting permits from the city, like annual pass or something, that, they are not supportive of this idea. So, I think most businesses would be okay to put a time limit for like 1 or 2 hours, except those several businesses. They want a solution for that exception because in the past, they asked parking meter to extend it from 2 or 3 hours to 6 hours so they can pay. They are willing to pay, but they want to stay longer. So, we want to come up with a solution to accommodate their request so they can stay more than just 1 or 2 hours in case we put a sign there. That's one concern. And then, there was suggestion that the parking meter will keep the cameras, whatever the safety sticks, they call it, who just are dangerous and prohibited areas of parking, such as the bus stop or the yellow line, where they can't ticket the way it used to be. And they estimated the revenue to be 5,000, 50, 50. There were some concerns about keeping, punishing the residents, you know, with tickets in case there are some misleading signs. So, that's another option. And the one system that you mentioned, I want this acting city manager to explain to us about that system. You said that costs 800 something, and it's needed for the manual...
Yeah. So, what we did use to do is that we used to use the MPS system for the manual ticketing of traffic violations. So, that system is no longer available to us. And we had 2 devices which was provided by them. They took away those devices. So, we got in touch with another company because right now, we look... And this system is then linked to the court system where all the revenue goes and through them, it's then sent back to the city. So, what we talked to another company, and they provide us with 2 handheld devices for, you know, our officers and an $800 per month charge to maintain and use their software. And they take care of all the running maintenance of that software. And there's no revenue sharing or anything. So, it's basically an $800 monthly charge.
So, how do we function with given tickets outside of Joseph Campo where there's no cameras? How does it work?
So, the, they would have, the officer, parking officers would have these handheld devices, and they would monitor all the cars outside, you know, everywhere throughout the city. And wherever they see either violation or let's say, a business owner calls us and says, okay, this car has been parked here for 4 hours or it has been parked here overnight. So, they can go and then, you know, they can take picture of the car and the violation, and they can then issue a manual ticket through that system.
Yes. That sounds good, but at this moment, for example, if someone parked across the yellow line, didn't call it, or hold it, how do we handle that? How does it go through the system?
Right now, we're not enforcing anything.
We don't have any system. It's just we bring the ticket to the department.
No, Mayor, I mean. So, what are you saying? So, basically, before they're using the MPS system, they would print a ticket and would go straight to the court. Since we don't have that system, right now, we're in limbo until we get the other one. So, parking enforcement at this current time can't run. They would call an officer, and we would go write the ticket, you know, in between, if somebody like parked the yellow line or anything, if somebody called like a fire hydrant. The officers would have to go write the ticket because currently, they don't have access until they get the handheld device.
And if we get that system, the parking enforcement officers would have it?
Correct. They would get it, and they would be able to write tickets just as they're doing currently until we got rid of the old system. So, it'd be the same way they were doing it with MPS. But now, soon as the new system, it'll be the same thing. It links through the court, everything else like that.
Mr. Chair? Basically, I think it's too early to discuss about meters right now as it's, you know, July 1st, you know, it's for free. So, I think we could give maybe 30 to 60 days until we see how businesses are, you know, seeing the effects, if it's a good or bad. And then, there we can have a town hall meeting with the, you know, with the business owners like we had previously. And then, we hear from them, hey, it's been 30 days, 60 days. What's update? What you guys want us to do? And then, we figure what we should do as council mayor. Regarding the ticketing, previously, we had called enforcement for the MPS. So, I know they used to write them down. They, it was handwritten. And then, they used to use a system through a phone.
Yeah, the handwritten names no longer accessible through the courts or anything else. We have to use a device with technology that would go straight to the court.
Before MPS, there was a phone that they were using and taking photos and writing tickets.
Before MPS?
Yes.
Yes, I don't know what system it was.
But it was a handwritten... No, no, it wasn't. It was through the phone. They were taking photos and writing tickets, and then they print them out.
Yes, I think that might have been through Clemis who no longer supports any... They don't do parking tickets anymore through that app, yeah. So, we, I think it was through Clemis back then, and then Clemis got rid of anything, the handhelds to do with parking. So, they, Clemis was no longer an option, which we use for regular tickets now, officers.
Is there any option that they could write using the same system as the officers?
No. That's why I'm saying that's Clemis. We tried with them, and there's no access to that. And then, also, the way we write tickets, they would need access through the MDC, which is... they would need access through the MDC, which is lien. And they couldn't have access to that with a lien and then printing out everything else. And those are very expensive. They use just for police guys because of lien.
So in this new system that you guys trying to sign up with, I think how long they've been in business? Is that a company that we can trust with?
They have been working with a lot of cities around Michigan and other states. So it's not a new company. And all we wanted was to have some system available so that if there is a need to enforce any parking, we don't have to call a police officer every time to come and enforce any parking. So that the parking officers can then have, do it themselves. That was the only reason. And it was a very reasonable price, eight hundred dollars a month. It's not a big number.
So before MPS ended contract, how they were writing tickets when they were?
Through MPS. MPS gave us the machines that this company is gonna do. So it was through MPS and they gave it to us. Same thing, it's basically the same thing. It's a different company. It's have now not taken any revenue from the tickets. They're just charging eight hundred dollar fee and we're writing on the same handle, which goes directly to the court. So you're avoiding all that and it goes into their system and became an option.
And it costs, I guess, eight hundred dollars for the system, software. It's a wrap. Let me be honest with you.
If nobody discuss, I have some experience also. Before MPS, we used to use the manual ticket handwriting. So there was the maximum eleven thousand a year revenue will come. One day, we had a discussion when Kathy Anger was here. Me and former mayor has a disagreement. Kathy Anger clarified that I'm right. So if eight hundred, around ten thousand dollar a year. So the violation only we're gonna use for what we're saying, that is that it will come more than ten thousand dollar or not. We're just taking the idea. Thank you for bring this. Everything right now digital. That's why we are saying digital. And there is another idea we'll talk. And we'll do some, take the idea, discussion and do the math, see how much we can go. That's all. And yes, we used to have a right handwriting ticket. The system, and they've been to the court, entered the court. And there is the file. They still have the same employees. So that was the system too.
Mr. Mayor. And they've agreed to come, may I probably file? We had the parking company, I'll clarify myself and Khamasamari. Not even one week. We're discussing about the parking meter. We need to enforce it or something like that. I'm not sure the business owner or residents, how they're gonna feel it and how they don't like it. My suggestion, I know city losing money. Councilman Hassan donating some money and he says some people or some other people which are going to donate money also. It could be helpful. But at least ninety days, six months, two months or ninety days, we can watch how the business run, how the business improving. And then we can make a town hall meeting, first of all, with the business owner and other party of the residents also. Then we can get some, together, we can make some good solution properly.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. I think we should wait another thirty six days for some criticism and we should do a couple of times public meeting to get our business owners feedback. And I think if we find one or two most important that can cover the chip prices, we can look for more.
Thank you. So at this time, even if we wait on enforcing any new system, doesn't mean that we have to ignore people who parked in the wrong spot. For example, across the fire hydrant or yellow lines or bus stop. They still have to be ticketed at this time because it's not, you know, it doesn't mean you have the green light to violate the rules at this time. So we need to keep writing tickets for people who violate the parking regulations. And then another way to make up for that money that we lost is something that's very reasonable to implement regulations for, to keep the city clean for littering. You know, we can come up with a resolution or an orderance that, you know, force the business owners to clean in front of their stores. And then we have some officer that can pass by every day, you know, around certain time and issue tickets to those who don't keep in front of their stores clean. That's very reasonable because there are some people who are very, very negligent about this and they don't care about the cleanliness of the city. So I think that's reasonable that we should pay more attention to this and do it, you know, have a, we have parking officer, we have code enforcement that we can utilize to enforce this regulation in case we do it. Because there are some stores or restaurants or places that, you know, they should be embarrassed about how their, you know, in front of their stores look. It's very embarrassing and we should enforce our regulations with that. So yes, today, we're just putting ideas. We are not voting on anything. But those ideas of the system that we have, maybe we should discuss with the people who know about the old system, how they used to do it. And then if this is something that would save us money and manpower as well. We don't want any violation, you know, to keep the, call the police to come and issue a ticket, you know. We want the parking code enforcement officers to be able to issue tickets, you know, at the same time and save time and save, you know, resources for the city. So we have a subcommittee that will continue to work on this, communicate with the business owners and with the residents. And we should come up with, and finalize, we should finalize ideas by next monthly. I may not be here, but I count on you to just take stuff.
Mr. Chair, one more point, sorry. Like you was telling the owner of any store or museum, three, four, five, six hours. We can do the two or three meter assigned to them and put the sign for them. And they control if they see somebody else parked and they're paying anyway, okay? So that could be possible. And the other also, at the parking law, at the corner yellow sign, if anybody parked, we can increase the fine for the tickets. And also fire hydrant, if anybody don't follow that, that is the basic law. We can increase the ticket money there. So there is the revenue also. It's cut. So good discussion today.
Our laboring cities issue tickets even for the parking meters. It's like sixty-five dollars, fifty dollars. There's no city that issue just twenty-five like you. So from now on, there is no excuse. If you get a ticket and you have all the time to, you know, chop and do your stuff. But if you get a ticket, you rate, we should, we should increase the rate so we can make up for the lost money.
Do you know how much Dearborn charges for lawn not cut for a ticket?
How much?
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, I know. We are spoiling our.
Just to put it out there. So we are very kind to our residents with tickets.
Yeah, so this is what we did to help the residents. First, we passed a resolution to issue a warning before you get a ticket. That's one thing, to give you more time to fix things. Second, we increased the length of the grass from five inches to seven inches to give you more time. And if you still get a ticket, don't complain because we already give you all, you know.
But even if they cut it and they bring a picture to show it, we even wait at times. So we, I'm telling you, like, I know there's some complaints, but the city does a lot of favors to these tickets, so.
Yeah, all right.
One thing, Mr. Mayor, I little bit disagree about the, I don't agree with you about the store, they clean up their front and everything. But we, as a city, we need to do our intelligence too. I don't see any street being cleaned for last, I don't know, two, three months maybe. You know, we purchased all those big equipment, spent all those money, and nothing's been happening. So that's something that we need to discuss.
I agree. We have to do our part. We have to do our part and that's why we bought some equipments that cost millions of dollars. So that's true. But at the same time, we cannot, we cannot ignore those people who are negligent about the cleanliness. You know, I see some places where it's, you know, you walk and there's so much trash in front of the store or in the place. You know, if you ignore that and take it's right to do that, I think there's something wrong with that. This is, there should be some kind of penalties for that as well.
Also, Mr. Chair, one thing to John, who is our city manager. So MPS, when are they gonna remove the system?
They are in the process of.
They did in some.
They are taking, they are there in the process of doing it. They are coordinating with the DBW and they are moving gradually, you know, the machines.
Okay, and are they gonna cover the holes up?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, so we done with this discussion. We are not voting on anything. But we move to item C, the one we moved from the council agenda, which is resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-five approving street closure for two thousand twenty-five Hamtramck Labor Day festival.
Motion?
Second?
All right, discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Hassan, go ahead.
This festival was one time discontinued because of finance issue, support, all those thing. And after that, next year, in this council meeting, I said, no, that kinds of festival we need in Hamtramck. And I donate thousand dollar to start the festival again. We are not ignore the festival. Some of the media, in the Facebook, somebody, you know, writing. So just want to clear, we not ignore the festival. We want a festival. We have done, I just want to give example. We have done in Conant Avenue, first Bengali festival, Kenip to Komor. There is the church. And church father came to us and we respect. Right way, we move the stage far away from that area. And next year, we really move really by the Komor. So not even very close to, because very sensitive. We have to respect it. So same thing is here right now on the Josa Campo. Al Islam Ajit at the corner now. Ajit Ali next to there, only one block. They spoke to me, they spoke to some other council member also. Their request to move the stage, one block, not even one, in the homes. After homes and stage and festival activity will start from there, go back to all the carpenter. It's normal festival, there is the two block before carpenter is still empty, not doing. About twenty years ago, I used to say until carpenter. So the request came, we want a stage and festival activities. Road closing from Kenip is okay. Festival activities start from the after homes. Stage faster stage will be there. And this area should be empty. And this is good for also safety also. And that is the one, that's why I bring to the new business. We'll discuss today and we might gonna put in table today to discuss more because Mayor Potem has some issue also. And Mr. Mayor, you also had some issues previously. So definitely, I am on favor of one block go, push back to south, north side of the Kenip. Start from right after homes. So that is my concern and that is my agreement.
Thank you. So we can talk to the administrations of both mosques that are very close to the stage. I don't know, I heard last year that Sheikh of Masjid Ali saying, whether it's on this side or that side, we still can hear the music and the noise. So it doesn't make any difference. So they requested from them to just stop playing music during the prayers, which they did last year. So we want to hear from them if that's okay, if that's a good solution or not. Because moving it down a little bit, maybe it can save some space. But we still can hear the sound. It's not a solution to the problem.
Now, they still gonna continue to stop prayer time, that will grow it.
No, last year, they.
No, they will do this year too, but they request one block, that's all.
Well, we can hear from them. Here we have one from administration of Masjid Ali. He can tell us what they think. I mean, it's, we all come here to comment during this discussion. And we want to hear from you too, if you have any.
Is that allowed?
They suspend the rule?
I can suspend the rule and do, and we want to hear. Instead of waiting for another two weeks, I mean, he can tell us what they think.
So somebody would have the motion to suspend the rules. Somebody.
Are you in favor of that?
Aye.
As Masjid Ali, we have no problem with the festival. Spoke out of last year. They were there before us. I hate people when they move to Hamtramck that they complain about the Adan. They say, Allah Allah is still, you knew that the Adan was there. Same thing, we knew the festival was there when we opened the mosque. So we have no problem with it, especially after they stopped the music for the prayer. Masjid Al-Slaah, I can't talk about them, but they might be worse because they're right next to the, they have it worse than us.
Thank you. Any other concern, Mr. Mayor Potem, you wanna talk about?
Isabel can have to talk about. This discussion was brought up to our former city manager, Max.
It's not former, sorry. He's still city manager.
Suspended.
It's on leave. He is currently our city manager. I don't know why the titles, he's currently our city manager.
Okay, we spoke to Max. It's been three years, we were trying. Mr. Mayor, it was an issue about the Adan. Me, I get involved and, you know, with Mam Yasef and from Masjid, Masjid Al-Slaah regarding the music and timing. And we were able to come to a conclusion last year with the prayer timing. And we were able to sit down and, you know, they provided the timers to the festival committee where they're able to shut down the music for, I think, ten, fifty minutes from the time the prayer is called until end. And also during that, we, you know, we discussed as, Hamtramck is a diverse city and there's a large number of Yemeni and people, you know, Bengali, Asian, all the communities where, why not include this part of communities that have also music? Or it could be a sheet, it could be anything during that festival. It's a diverse community. It's been three years, we've been going back and forth, back and forth with Max and the committee, me personally. And every time we talked, every year, it's always their excuses. And, well, this year, we're too late. But then next year comes by, I think we're still a little late. You know, and it's planning, it needs to, you know, it can't just be done in minutes and months. Even though we've been talking for three years, how come it hasn't been done? So then Isabel came to the plans of discussing with the committee because I brought up to our acting city manager, Ableson. I've been talking to Max. We need to have a third stage festival for the Yemeni, the Bengali community. And other communities wants to participate because we have a huge community in Hamtramck. And so Mayor would like, he doesn't have any information. I think he discussed with Isabel. And then Isabel called me up and said, hey, listen, we might be able to have a third stage. Even though they were given so hard time adding that to the festival. So then Isabel called me up and wrote, sent me an email with the committee deciding that, you know what, let's add a third stage.
It wasn't a decision, you know, in terms of anything new here. It was always something that everybody on both sides wanted to happen.
Well, it took three years for it to happen. And maybe thank you for your work, that you are able to sit down with them and make it. But what really catch my eye is when they send me an estimate of what's gonna cost for a third stage. It's ridiculous. The whole festival costs between eighty to a hundred thousand a year.
That's not true.
Well, then Hamtramck review is mine. Because they have article about this whole thing, so they have numbers. So for one stage to be added, it's gonna cost sixty-five thousand. I think it's ridiculous. It's either, they're trying to make it so hard. I think, I think it's really ridiculous, it's either, they're trying to make it so hard for us not to have a third stage, because no who the heck is gonna sponsor a stage worth sixty-five thousand? So, uh, this is my issue. Nobody, I don't think anybody in this council or chambers against a festival at all. We've been always hopeful for the festival, we always show up, we always participate, uh, during the festival and the Labor Day parade. Nobody's against it, like Councilman Hassan have said, and I guarantee you, every council member and the mayor agrees that nobody's against a festival. My thing, because of the diversity of this community, I think things needs to change, or needs to be added. And, uh, so I, I, I think we, you know, we need to table this to give more, more of ideas, how much does a stage will cost?
Yeah, it costs.
Because I think sixty-five thousand for one stage, because we want to add the Bengali and Arabic music, that's ridiculous.
I have to disagree, um, just because the organizers are the experts in the costing. Um, they did their homework, they've been doing the homework to put it on after the city stopped organizing the event. And this team of really dedicated volunteers, we took it up, took up the cost of, a lot of them are helping finance it in front, the money from their own pockets and then making it back, um, which quite frankly is a really impressive ridiculous thing. A ridiculously wonderful thing that they do. The total cost of this year's festival is, what they're saying is between one fifty and one seventy. There are two portions of the festival generally, with stages and then the other with the carnival. So what we're talking about is, my understanding is crowd control and safety. We expect that reasonably, the attendance of the festival, there'd be more people. So the budget is a lot more than just a stage. It is actually increase in cost for safety, for power to finance the stage, for the insurance that the festival costs. And again, everybody is on the same page that it is a good idea, but it is not a reason to table the approval of just a street closure, because there was costing that seems like is a sticker shop. I think we have to trust the organizers and understand that this is not an event that is put on by the city. So their budgeting and what they do in the festival, um, isn't a consideration when we talk about street closure. There's a lot of festivals and, and events that CED is in charge of working with, um, where we work with them on the details. And I think it, it isn't a collaborative move, it doesn't mean that we support the festival if we table this. The festival needs time to advertise, just like the other event that's up for approval today. They have other things they have to work out with the city also. So if the Labor Day festival doesn't get approved today, I don't understand how we would be treating the second event on the agenda item today differently from the Labor Day festival. If we table this one, let's table the other one, because we don't have all the details of that figured out either. I know that there's a lot of collaboration between the city and the festival that could go a lot better. And that is what CED is here to do, to support the festival, they give us a gift by doing this. And I'm asking and I'm just saying I need, I need it to be approved today. Do we hope that it will cost less? Yes, for the organizers sake, we, I would love, and the organizers would love, and the city would love there to be another stage. And it's just gonna take work. And this year, we're collaborating on it and we can do it, but it starts by supporting them and granting this.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Potem, uh, I'm agree with her, if we table this one, we have to table other one too. And also Ajit Ali said, I don't have any problem. Against of every other thing, uh, the, then you, festival is there before you open the mosque. But the, I have to take the consideration, listen to the, the side, I did listen. But I, uh, the, I don't wanna, uh, terribly, uh, of the discussion, conversation. I think you and Mayor, if we have some concern, we can talk to the organizer, see, minimize that concern.
I, personally, I have discussed with the committee my concern last year and they took care of everything, honestly. And we didn't have any disagreement, I mean, everything we discussed was done last year. And there was no issues, uh, you know, with the stuff that we discussed. Uh, I understand that, um, it is good to add, you know, um, another stage and bring more artists and singers from different backgrounds, Yemenis, Bengalis. But, uh, this stage is not the only thing needed now. And are we ready to bring those singers from somewhere to cover the whole day of, you know, activities? Do we have that plan? Uh, I don't think we have it at this moment, I mean, and then there's only one month left. Or, and there's more money to sponsor those people, it's not just the stage. So, um, if possible and they can accommodate a few hours for some singers on the same stage, that, I think that would be a good solution for, for this year, until we figure out, you know, the sponsors and bring people who can participate a whole three days of the event. I don't think we have that many singers and, you know, artists who can come and, and do activities for three days. Otherwise, the, the stage will be empty. And, and there is no point to add another stage with no people to, you know, keep those activities going for three days. Uh, that's my concern for now, I don't think we can do it in one, one month. We can maybe raise the money, we can go to businesses and, and get the money done. But do we have those, uh, people ready to travel from other places and come to attend those activities? Uh, I don't, I don't think so, I think, uh, Mr. Mayor Potem would agree with me on this. Uh, we need more time to set up a plan to cover the whole time of the, of the festival for three days and, and come up with activities and people who can take care of that, uh, the money is not the only issue. So I think the best thing to, to show some kind of diversity and attract more people of the local community is to find a gap where we can bring singer from here or there for two hours, Bengali, two hours Yemeni, and they cover up, you know.
Mr. Mayor, I really like your idea, I think we need to conclude the, we can discuss all day long, it's a great solution maybe, as of now. That you can assign some time, if, if we can come up with this, uh, artists, you know, maybe nobody will able to bring somebody that expensive, you know. So, uh, I think that's a good idea, just talk to the committee, work with them, you know, give us, if we can come up with some singer or whatnot, then, you know, we can pass them to assign some time, right?
Yeah, and, and for the logistics, you know, to be done and advertisement, I think it's a wise thing to just approve it today so they can continue with their work.
Because we are just voting on clothing, we're not voting on stages and all that stuff, that's all extra, it's like off topic.
It is.
It's really going off topic, like are you not gonna close the street if they don't give you a stage? Is that what you, like you're voting on the closing of this?
We just discuss, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you to bring this, uh, discussion. Yes, it is a big, a big, a large event, big event for the city of Hamtramck, we already enjoy those. And very well-known artists coming to perform this event. So I'm not against any of those, I hope artists coming from Bangladesh and, and perform there. Artists coming from Niya or, you know, Yemen to perform there. But to get the stage, we like to make the balance, the same level of artists should be to perform this stage. So if other community or other, other people gonna be, arrange those kind of artists, Mayor, Mayor Potem, or myself, we can sit down with them and we can share the stage. And we, we can go from there. And at this moment, I, I suggest, let's go to approve the street closing. And minor things or more other things, we can discuss together, the mayor and council to.
Thank you.
Acting manager Amir said he'll do an hour of singing.
That's an hour right there.
Mr. Chair, I don't disagree with you, I just, the reason I'm, I'm making this voice loud, so committee can hear, Isabel can hear that, this has been a three-year issue. So it should, it shouldn't have been already a plan. So right now, I'm with you a hundred percent, there's not enough time to call art, you know, artists to come and sing. And, and able, maybe, maybe the most thing we could do is maybe collect money, you know, without even reaching. But the reason I'm, I'm making, I'm, I'm speaking here today, making it loud, so the committee out, that, that will watch this, will know this. This is a three-year issue, it's now from today, this should have been planned from the get-go. So hopefully next year, I'm not gonna be in council, but hopefully who's gonna be in council will make sure that all the committees have, uh, activities or athletes participate in this festival that happens here. Nobody's against the festival, I love the festival, my whole life, I've always been there. The only thing I want is, we have a diverse community, why not have different music from all different backgrounds? That's the whole thing, like the mayor said, so I'm, like I said to Isabel, I'm, I'm willing to sit with the committee. And I've been talking to the committee, to sit down, add artists from, you know, from Yemeni, Bengali, maybe other communities, to use all the, the stages that we have, try to pull timing somehow, at least to show that, you know what, they're, they're willing to open the doors for other artists from all different communities.
I really wanna add that that was already in the works. So the issue with timing that we heard from the organizers was that sometimes, um, performers only wanted to perform after prayers were over. And then we got into scheduling complex because the festival ends at ten. And so there was limited time and, I mean, there's a lot of work that goes into this and it's complicated. And I know and I acknowledge that sometimes it's frustrating when progress is slow. For this committee, again, it's not a committee of the city, it's a committee of volunteers. And the reality is that, um, when they ask for a closure and apply to do the event, um, the city is not, we're, we're making sure that it's safe, but the city doesn't dictate what happens inside the event. And we can help them, like we show up as collaborators and I think that's what everybody wants. And I hope that's the way that we proceed with this moving forward.
We do, respectful, not dictating here. We, we are requesting, asking respectfully, with diversity of the community, I think we need to have different music. So we always thank them for their, for their work that they have done, the old volunteer that's, I mean, this entire volume, we always thank, during Labor Day, we always thank, you know, members or, you know, residents, whoever helped these Labor Day festival. So the whole of this, we're requesting kindly with respect, that diversity of the community here in the city of Hamtramck is to have different music.
And I'm confident that they want that too, so I think.
Alright, and so I think, here's the thing, we should find some volunteers to join the organizing committee. They're all from, from the Yemeni Bengali community, so, so they can collaborate with them for, for the future and start early planning for such event. For now, I think the priority is just to approve the closure of the street and so, and then we discuss the details.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Musa, we're voting on closeness, thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Sedman.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Rafi.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2025-85, uh, approved.
Thank you, and then the next one, uh, is approving a street closure for the Bengla Desi.
Desi Festival Nights.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so they are planning to do it. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Motion. I have for.
One second.
Alright.
So they are planning to do it on the chair side, I encourage them to bring it to Hamtramck, uh, since, since a more participant are from the Hamtramck. And there we need to work, uh, you know, if we let them do it, also they are asking for one-hour extension to close that Labor Day.
Alright.
You got my message.
So is that the same one that used to take place in Conant or a different?
No, it's the one that is part in game field.
Oh, okay, okay.
Last, last year, last people showed up. And they're bringing one of the top singer.
Alright, uh, would you provide us another stage?
You know, I, I know you said connect to carpenter, is that like one mile of connect to carpenter?
Same thing as the Labor Day festival.
Okay, so it's gonna be a little as well, is it to carpenter for the Labor Day?
Can you pick carpenter?
Okay, that was my only question, are they gonna shut it off at Comor, like they do the Labor Day festival? Because when it was open all the way to carpenter, we had a lot of problems from the police end. And I want, for public safety, we don't have the manpower to go, we used to go from Joseph Campbell all the way to carpenter, where they had the rides and everything and it was, we had much more, many more problems, so that's my only concern. We go to, we shut it down at Comor and then it's have the. Yeah, that would be perfect for us, I just didn't want it to go.
No, it's not gonna go more than Comor.
Okay, if the city is at Comor, that, that's perfect for us, yeah, because it scared me because.
They don't have that kinds of money to bring all by crossing.
Correct, because it created us a lot of problems on the past time, so I just hope.
Big problem, I know that, I'm the witness.
Alright, thank you.
You don't have to come on, right?
If Joseph Campbell to Comor where the.
Can it to Comor.
Yeah, it's gonna have to, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, can't to Comor, that should be enough.
What timing, how about the timing, eleven o'clock can you do for?
I mean, that's, you know, and my only other question is with the police budget and the more than Mayor is, it's gonna create a lot of overtime. Is this festival gonna reimburse the overtime or is that been brought up or?
Is the other festival reimbursing the money?
The other festival pays for overtime, yes.
If they do, then we.
And that would just be my only thing is we're gonna have to.
They have to pay.
Yeah, they have to pay. I guess it's not gonna be much, maybe seven dollars for one hour overtime, is it three days or?
As of now, they asked for three days, it could be modified, they will talk to Isabel and come up.
Is this, I mean, is this an all-day festival or setting?
Not, not.
Six to twelve, eleven, that's what that's. They're, they're asking for all-day closure.
They're asking for an all-day closure, the festival hours are set to be from six P M. until eleven P M. They're requesting reserves in their application until midnight, presumably to get people to clear the area, so. I think one thing just for council to note is, these are exactly the kind of conversations that staff has with organizers. When we set the meeting, and this one is going to take place this Friday with these organizers, because it's a quick turnaround to get this event to happen. So those are organized by CED and fire, DPW and police all attend. And so we, we hash these details out, um, and the community will be notified as well as you.
Mr. Chair, Chief, he mentioned until eleven o'clock, is there a noise ordinance?
Yes.
That would have to be waived by the council, like, you don't, if I have to waive, for any special detail, if you guys waive it and it's put all up there, wouldn't it?
Does it have to be a resolution that we have to?
Oh, we just have to approve it.
The resolution, I'm not sure on that, but I don't want the police end.
City attorney.
Yes.
Would, do we have to pass a resolution to pass or is it for the festival?
Correct.
But the, uh.
That depends, so start from the beginning.
So the festival is requesting to have hours of the event from six P M. until eleven.
Okay.
And ten o'clock.
We're trying to do a variance on the ordinance?
Essentially, yes.
You don't have to pass an order?
No, no, yeah.
You're already approving the festival and everybody knows what festival it is.
Sorry, I missed something, I got it backwards.
Ten and eleven P M., that's a question.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Literally, yeah. We are approving the road closing. And if we don't approve timing, there is the problem could be the sound ordinance effect. So if, if we approve timing, that all the question is gone.
Yes.
So we're gonna make the, uh, give you, uh, closing. And also timing, we, this up to you and we give you permission. And we should also don't have no issue, you talk to them and timing.
Yeah, that tracks with the way that we handle applications.
Okay.
Well, I think on the, uh, what did you say, if the city manager approve it or something, he can extend another hour.
We'll, we'll check and make sure that we know that.
I, I did read it because I would get a copy from, uh, what's the guy name, other gentleman.
But it still come through the council all the time.
Well, we can, okay, approve the closure and add the timing, which would be up until eleven o'clock, so that, so.
Like minimize everything.
Well, can I, a little bit further, Sunday is the last day, is it going till eleven o'clock on Sunday?
Yes.
And so when are you cleaning on, after Sunday, so everything's gonna be torn down before midnight?
It should have been, yeah.
If you end at eleven, you're telling me a mile of road is gonna be cleaned up before midnight?
It's just an extra hour, so they can figure out.
Miss.
It's, it's.
Just stay another hour, like.
So what the Labor Day festival does, they're really good at, it's not, go ahead, requesting the closure until seven A M. the day after the festival.
That's, yeah, that's appropriate.
This is not, I don't know what the time is because they would.
So that's why Mr. Councilman Hassan said, you work with them, you give them the explanation.
Same timing, please, Ms. Clark, you're right.
They don't have to be two one hour.
No.
No.
So you're gonna have to extend it. No. So you're going to have to extend it into Monday morning. And also if the, it starts on the 8th, which is Friday, and if it starts, if the festival starts at 6:00, are there tents? Are there games? Are there rides?
That's something they will figure out.
Whose day?
Well, the committee will figure out.
So the organizers?
Organizers, that's not our business.
Okay, I thought you had something to do with it because I talked about it today. So, yeah, so if it's Friday, it will start from 7:00 in the morning, Friday, let's say?
Evening.
I know, but you have to set up. You're closing up the park. You're closing up the street.
Friday, usually very few people show up. So mostly they take Friday.
I know. I, Paul, please, I need to be a little organized here. I'm sorry, please, one at a time. If your festival starts Friday at 6:00, and they're setting up the festival and it starts at 6:00, don't you need the first part of the day to set it up?
Mr. Chair?
So please, please.
Well, I'm going to add, to make it easy, so we could pass this, start Friday at 8:00 a.m. in the morning. Always till Sunday to 11:00 Monday.
No, Monday morning, Monday morning, 7:00, you have some time to clean.
Yes.
So I'm going to do Friday from 8:00 a.m. to Monday morning, so just like 7:00 a.m. So that gives you all night to clean the street, and it's open before traffic hits by 7:00 in the morning. Okay? Okay, that makes sense now. Any more discussion?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Fai?
Yes.
Councilman Sedman?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2025-88 approves closure of, I'm going to just point and read it all up, Joseph Campbell from Connect to Comer from 8:00 at 8:00 in the morning to 8:11, which is a Monday at 7:00 in the morning. And that's approved.
All right.
Thank you.
We thought we were going to have a short meeting today, still two hours.
Oh, no. So did we vote already?
We have more session.
Yeah, that's all. So no, not yet. I think not yet.
I want to sit down.
Okay. Reports.
So, yeah.
Yeah, we're all set for reports.
Okay. So, all right, we're done with that. Well, thank you so much. I want to thank all those organizing committees for all the festivals, starting from, you know, the Eid Festival, that was, you know, the park and the veteran park, and then Labor Day Festival, and Galidezi Festival, and all these activities that bring, you know, joy and happiness to the city. I'm supportive of all of them, and, you know, they bring different stuff to the city, different entertainment activities, which is good for the city. So we can probably make them better and more diverse in the future, but we have to start planning ahead of time. Well, it's election season, so I call people to go out and vote, you know, for whoever you want. Just participate. Don't be intimidated by anything. This is your right to go out and vote. And so encourage your family and your friends to go out and vote. And you have, the absentee ballot started already, right? And is there an early voting this year?
No, we don't have early voting.
No, early voting. So, yeah, good luck to all the candidates, and we hope to see, I'm sure we will see probably new faces on the city council, right? In the future? Because not everybody's running for reelection, so there would be new faces. We would have a new mayor, of course, unless I decide to stay. Okay, so with that, I don't have anything else to add. Thanks everyone for coming and joining us today. And good luck with everything. That's the end of my report. Mayor Portem, if you want to say anything.
Nope. Thank you, everybody for coming. You guys have a good night.
Thank you. Any of the council members?
Mr. Mayor, so elections does bring energy to the our community. But one bad thing that I'm experiencing, people stealing my deer sign. I don't know who's doing it. So that's the bad things. Please don't do it. Please respect each other. We all in the community. It's nothing personal. You know, we all have a right to run for the election, and just respect each other, please. Thank you.
Yeah, that happened to me too. I mean, I remember I give one person five-yard signs, and every time I give it to him, they store. So that's great. You always will see negative people in the community, and that's okay. But...
It's hard to even find a share.
I know. It costs money. So good luck with that. And with that, we come to the end of the reports, and we move back to the second round of public comments. Oh, you want to say something? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you for coming in this evening and joining us. Mr. Mayor, if everybody claim and blame they took the flower and our belongings, so who should we blame? I suggest to every community, please tell your kids and families, don't destroy the, it is expensive. Financially, you have to don't destroy our banner and all the stuff. I'm the first victim. And now I stop putting there. Each time I did it, then the left in the morning is done. And a few other places, I already discussed those issues. I'm requesting everybody, friends, family, each and every community, please stop the kids and stop the people. And look, not only mine, each other banners, who going to destroy it? At least if we find somebody, maybe we can stop everything there.
It is a ticket or an arrest if you are stealing personal from private property. That is private property.
So thank you. So finally, Mr. Mayor, we enjoy the last election with you. We miss this election, and we miss you too. Thank you again, and let's see what's happening.
All right. Good luck, guys. With everything out.
So are you still here?
I'll still be here.
Election, for election.
Maybe until then. Well, maybe until then, we never know.
I miss the election, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we come to the end of the reports, and we move back to the second round of public comments, please.
Okay. I do have one email from Abiz. Good evening. Steve Clark, first, I'd like to say thank you for your service. It's nice to see female leadership in the room. Thank you for always maintaining class and respect. My ideas of concern are as follows. Would the city be willing to partner with private organizations or nonprofits to create or fund a low-cost vet clinic? Number two, what is the basis for the current enforcement action on properties with orange signs? Is it a mass compliance initiative? Please advise. I'd like to highlight building department doing their best work with community. Whenever there are concerns regarding compliance and safety, I know there's sometimes a disconnect, but everyone is trying their best. Just want to shine light on the service they are trying to provide to, for safety and order. Also, if workshops can be provided by building department once a month for community, I think that's a great opportunity to cover any gaps of misinformation. Finally, I'd like to recommend Community Service Day for city council members, including the mayor and city personnel, where each employee does community service out in park event, for instance, and connect with all community members and get tasked with a job to step into the shoes of community off the clock with the hope of restoring peace, unity, giving back, and perspective. Thank you, Abiz. Nasser Hussain, you have two minutes.
Regarding the parking meters, I think...
Push the button, sir.
Push the button, please.
To generate 300,000 a year. It's like 1,000 per Business Day. That comes out to 20 tickets a day. And if you raise the amount to $100 per ticket, it'll be only 10 tickets a day. In regard to M.P.S. offer for the bus stops and this, I think you could do it ourselves. It's very easy now to get a camera in that spots, and the attendant can just watch it, and there's a big parks. There, they could easy go and give them a ticket. Also, for the businesses that want three hours, the one hour, two hour would be free, but if they want more than that, they just have to pay the meter and feed the meter. So there is no issue in there.
And you have to stop.
You have to have payers, of course, but the parking is a goldmine. Don't give it to any private company. The city makes hundreds of thousands of it. Before, they used to make money because nobody cared. The meters were broken. The attendant would do favors. If she knows you, she won't give you a ticket. She selectively enforced a lot. So this is where the money is. Keep it in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Abu Hussain?
Please speak into the mic. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you, Mayor, and the whole of the city council. Thank you for the decision that you make and parking.
How do the customers feel? Are they happy?
No, I feel relieved. Everybody is a customer, business owners. I think Mahmoud is one of them. All the businesses, it takes so long. We suffer almost four years. And I want all the council, the mayor, the new post-cabinet, to take steps before they make a decision, to talk to the owners, to talk to the businesses. Because, let's see, we have some new business, but not all of them went through. A lot of businesses, they closed. Because of the meter, number one, I'm saying parking meter is the reason number one. Right now, if you make decision about what's coming, please have some time for the customers. Because customers, they coming from Detroit. They come from Durban, okay? That is, we need business, okay? It's like you're making plan for festivals and everything. That's good. But business, it's what make Hanrami going on. We cannot say 10 huts or building or houses. Every city, first, first, they take care of business. I want another...
Ask the mayor.
Okay. Right now, I'd like to thank Dr. Amir Galib. He did a very well job. And I want a new post-cabinet to have the same leadership, to go fix road, fix alleys, fix businesses.
No news.
Okay? Go ahead. We waiting for a new business. I'm happy if there is a new business opening at Joseph Campbell. It bring a lot of people to Hanrami. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abdul. Abdul Fatah, hello there. Two minutes.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm not speaking English. Okay, I'm talking in Arabic. The topic is, I saw a cancer, and I'm in Hanrami. I'm 15 years old, and I'm in America. I thought I'd buy a house. I bought a house in December. The first thing I said was, I'll pay taxes, 700, 700. Now I see the house, the salary of the house, is almost 3,700. Do you have any options? Or can I buy it? Or what?
How much would you buy the house for?
I gave them 3,000. I moved the house, I paid 10,000, and I'm back in the house. I'm 15 years old, and I'm paying taxes every month.
So the law in Michigan, I'm going to explain to you in Arabic.
But can you translate what he said to everybody first?
He said he moved from another state, from Arkansas, and he bought a new house. And the seller told him he will have the tax 700, you know, in the summer, so now he has it for 3,000 dollars. So he's questioning why?
I explained it to him.
Huh?
I did explain it to him. I've been, yeah, I've been helping him a lot with this issue.
So when the ownership change here in Michigan, according to proposal A, you have to calculate based on the new price, you know, of the house. And then I was one of the victims. You know, I bought a house less than two years ago, and the tax went up from 2,000 to 6,000. And I came and I asked for help from the city. They told me no, you don't qualify for that based on your income, based on the size of the house. So I was rejected as the mayor. They didn't give me any help. So I'm paying 6,000. So I will explain to you in Arabic, but it's not an issue only in Hanrami. People thinks it's only in Hanrami. I get people to complain to me, and, you know, I work at the clinic, and then by mistake, they think I'm responsible for the surroundings of Hanrami. It's Detroit, and they show me those, Detroit, same issue in Detroit too. In Durban, it's even worse, and Durban height. Why is it worse to... Yeah, it's worse. Once, you know, based on the new price, the property value went up. So when you pay so much money for the house, they start calculating based on the new. And it's an estimate of 50, you pay tax for 50% of the value, which is a lot of money. But it's a, it's an issue in the whole machine. So basically,
I'm sorry, but there's too much going back, so I just got to let them know that his time is up. And I did give him... I did have... Yeah, we did that as well. I took him and he got there.
In 10 years, these tax prices are going to look good. Right now, it looks bad, but in 10 years, they'll say, wow, paying low. Everybody's paying much higher, so...
Yeah, well, I'm thinking to sell my house now. If anybody is interested, let me know.
And it's, I wish the community can, like, be put into notice that there isn't uncapping when a house is... And it's unfortunate that these mortgages and these title companies do not inform them that this is not the tax that you're going to pay with the previous owner. And we get a lot of people complaining that, you know, it jumped three times, four times.
It's real situation. We don't give them real. Mayor, open your house when the market crashes.
After he renovates it. Okay, I think we are all, that's all set. That's it for public comment. And now we will go into closed session.
Yeah, we have a short closed session.
Very short.
Can we motion?
Motion.
And it is 8:35?